I'm sorry, I was on mute, I think. Now you could hear me, right?
Yes.
All right, let me see if I could present, I want to be able to show my, I just put an agenda together pretty quick. If I'm not able to show it, I'll just go through it. Entire screen. Can't share your screen, you must grant permission or order the screen share, okay? Okay. Well, uh, looks like. I'll go through the agenda, what I could do, I could just email them to you. At the end, email the agenda to you at the end of this, so that way you have it.
That'd be great.
Okay, so I just want to give you an update as to where we at as of this week. The, we did. The, the last few days, we did some supplemental borrowings, I just wanted to confirm the ledge on Auburn. Because looking at the 1984. Original installs from CDM, the record foundation, quite a bit of ledge between the. Auburn Street Pump Station and all the way across Auburn. So we wanted to confirm some of the profiles, I know they hammered through some of that ledge. During the installation of the first force main, but you know, a few switch on sides, you know, if you found something in a specific location, most likely you're gonna find it. And again, to be able to build the cost estimate and be comfortable with it, I just wanted to confirm that. Uh, we also, in the cross-country piece, we are proposing about 300 feet of directional drilling with. HDP pipe, I just wanted to do a couple holes in there to be able to see, okay, you know, we could technically drill it so that nothing in the way that would prevent us from doing so. So those were confirmed, I also collected some samples from the base of the landfill on Thatcher Street, we couldn't really access the landfill. And from the junkyard, just to see if we. If we're able to find anything from an environmental standpoint in these samples, you know. For to characterize them and find a disposal location for them and to confirm whether the, you know, soils are contaminated. Uh, we send those out to the lab, we're still waiting on some results on those samples because we just recently did them. Uh, so this is the supplemental boring, I am actually combining the, all the borrowings, the geo probes were done back in 2018 through today. I think we had three rounds of borrowings and then also the. The M borrowings that were done back in 1984 and I'm making them part of this document. Uh, if you're a contractor looking to see, you know, what, what would be anticipated during the installation of the force man, I think. The more information on subsurface you have, the better off we're gonna be. And then along with that, I'm also preparing geotechnical memo that would, you know, consider the construction recommendation, supportive excavation, dewatering and. And all of that, uh, contract that could encounter during the construction of the force. We also put in maybe four or five monitor wells, um, at specific locations, uh, we gotta be able to go back. Measure the groundwater just before this project goes out to bid, so we have an accurate, uh, measurement on the depth of groundwater. So that's the, uh, the surface, the most recent. We did, um, you know, in the, for the preliminary, um, design, I think we've, we're about 50 to 60%. Uh, this week, we wrapped up the connection at Southfield. Uh, connection that would kind of make sense because, uh, it's not going to shut down the station. So we, we came up with a concept where a manhole, and again, we're gonna share these plans without really going into the, the. Get into the weeds and the details of the design. What I'd like to do, I'd like to share, um, either present the design with you. Uh, during a separate meeting or just send you a set of plans for you to take a look at and digest it for a little bit. And then maybe we could follow up with a design review meeting if that works.
And the. Let's say send the plans, yeah, and then we can. Yeah, we can meet and go over it.
Sure, yeah, I send the plans, I, you know, give you some time to kind of digest them, review them, and then we can follow up with it all or even, you know, a meeting or virtual call. Um, for the basis of design report, we prepare in the basis of design report, as you know, the pipe size was predetermined. Um, you know, we looked at expansion, we look at the, uh, pump station capabilities and the pumps at the Auburn Street facility there. Um, the projected, uh, you know, the flows currently entering the force man or going into the station and out of the station. So the, the pipe size is pretty, pretty straightforward, it's a 20 inch, we're going to put a 20 inch force pain. And in case, uh, this current force main today, um, if it's, if there is enough funds and there is an appetite to. Assess it and then maybe perhaps rehab it and use it as a secondary pipe. Uh, would be nice to have a same-sized pipe that would operate under the same conditions with the Auburn Street facility. Uh, pipe material, we, uh, we, we're going with, uh, we're recommending, uh, this DR 18, uh, sewer, a plastic sewer pipe. Uh, in the roadway and then the cross-country piece and across the landfill, we, we're recommending in the polyethylene, the fused polyethylene pipe. Just because of the conditions, uh, within the landfill or within the junkyard area there. There is some consideration that we'll have to discuss that with you guys too, uh, in the cross-country where, uh, the ground is saturated. And the water kind of enters the manhole, uh, there is. We have two options to either go with fiberglass manholes or polyethylene, uh, one-piece manhole that would prevent the water from getting in. And then keep the air release valves and all the force main components and, you know, uh, in dry condition. We pinned down the air release valve, vacuum relief valves along the alignment and those blow-off manholes. Uh, we'll talk, you will see the design, so it was a couple weeks ago, we met with Dennis and his staff at the Auburn Street facility. I think there's some discussions on replacing the controller inside the station. And perhaps putting a mag meter on the force man to, to really determine the flow, uh, going through the force man. The current meter is inside the station and those meters really cannot be calibrated. Um, you know, if, if the meter is out of, uh, is not working right, you wouldn't know what you're actually pumping out. So if there is a variance, you, you wouldn't know, and then there's no physical way to basically go in there and calibrate it. So the thought process is you could put a meter inside, uh, inside of a manhole outside the station and you could compare the flows. Uh, and you could have those two meters report to the SCADA and then, you know, cross, uh, reference them and, and obviously the new meter would be calibrated, you know exactly what you're pumping. And then of course the meter would have a bypass around it to be able to, uh, to take it out of service without having to shut down the force. But again, we could work, uh, we could go over these details when we do the, the actual design review and you have plans to look at. From a permitting standpoint, uh, the schedule, we have again tonight at 7:50, I have to do the, uh, notice of intent with the Whitman Conservation Commission. Tonight, tomorrow night, I have Brockton, um, maybe late in the evening. Uh, we did get a, um, letter from Brockton about two hours ago, um, the Conservation Commission went through. I mean, obviously nothing new to her, we, we've been before them like five or six times the last couple of years. Uh, so she did summarize, um, accurately summarize the, the process and I think it's pretty straightforward, I hope. Uh, we will know tomorrow how much of a back and forth we're going to, uh, to go with, with Brockton. But again, the alternatives, I think they have to work with us because at the end of the day, um, if they're gonna make it difficult, uh, you know. Nobody wants to see another force man rupture, especially within Brockton. Uh, the US Army Corps of Engineers, we did submit a, um, a pre-construction notification form and this was submitted on 11/3. Uh, the review period is about 60 days, uh, from the date of receipt. Uh, Mass Historic Commission, I did submit on 10/29/2020, the review period is about 30 days for this piece of information. Uh, MEPA, we, um. Submitted on 10/28/2020, the, I have a meeting with them on Monday, 11/23, and this is a virtual meeting, basically I walk in through the site. And they determined whether an environmental impact report would be required. Uh, or just a simple, uh, not a simple, but abbreviated, uh, environmental notification form. Um, and then there's 48 people that would be on that meeting, so. Uh, again, this is the 23rd, uh, which is Monday before the holiday year. On the State Revolving Fund, the SRF program, um, I've been, you, you guys have been aware that we did submit. The, uh, project, the, the PEF, uh, we submitted this by the deadline in August 2020. Uh, once you submit the, uh, the PEF, the, uh, the trust will issue a, what's called the IUP Intended Use Plan. And that would usually comes out in, um, January 2021. Now, we put in a placeholder, um, amount for like 12.5 million dollars, this is what we put in, but that number is not really set in stone. You could request less or you could request more once you're, um, you're on the IUP list and you determine that you're eligible to. Your project is eligible to be on that list and that comes out in January. Now, a question came up, uh, from Dennis the other day. Uh, do you have to have the fund appropriated before the, uh, before you, you do the stage, the construction stage launch of the SRF program? I guess you don't have to, uh, but, you know, let's just say town meeting happened, you want to postpone town, uh. You want to get the construction funds for this project at the annual town meeting, which is in the spring. You could certainly do that, um, as long as you apply and submit for the stage loan construction. Before August 2021, you should be all set, but if you miss August, let's just say town meeting gets postponed because of COVID or some other situations. And then you don't get to do it before August 2021, that means the project will be held one more year in terms of SRF. Uh, and then of course, SRF, to be able to, uh, they need to review the plans and give us authorization to advertise. Uh, and then subsequently, subsequently, they'll do authorization award, uh, once they deem that, uh, the, the plan set and the specs are in accordance with SRF requirements. Um, I looked into, uh, the interest rates, so usually interest rate through the SRF program is about 2%. Um, if you are, if Whitman was a housing choice community, uh, uh, the interest rate could be reduced to one and a half percent, but we checked and I don't think Whitman is. A housing choice community, uh, there is an application process, it's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. Um, usually the housing choice community, uh, uh, communities get, if you have a project like this, going out to bid or construction. I know my hometown of Easton got 250,000, just about a stone we applied for, just about every community that applies and they're part of that, um, HCC. They get about 250,000 dollars in grants, so I suggest it's a good idea to just apply. And if you are, um, a community with designated as, uh, housing choice. That interest rate could drop from 2% to one and a half percent. Um, in addition to the grant, which is 225,000 or 250,000. Uh. So. Again, the, in terms of the SRF, you could, you could request, you know, right now we have 12, 12 million, you could do 12, 13, 10 million, whichever, whichever way you decide. Uh, and depending what the, uh, what the actual, the final cost estimate would be. Looking ahead, um, we're going to submit to you, uh, I was hoping to do it before Thanksgiving, but of course, doesn't really matter at this point, before the holidays or after. I'm gonna give you the, submit the basis of design report and the, uh, what's called the 60% plan set. I'm not gonna do the specification at this point, just a table of contents, just because we could be going back and forth. And the way we're probably thinking about structuring, uh, the document would be, the base bid, uh, would include only the pipe replacement, uh, or the new pipe. And the alternate bid, as we discussed in previous meetings, uh, would involve the assessment of the existing pipeline. And then some estimated quantities for rehab or slash repair, lining or replacement. And of course, we don't know what those quantities are, but we will have a placeholder, you know, we could say like 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet. Um, you know, and of course, pending what the CCTV and the cleaning of the pipeline would reveal, uh, those quantities would vary. So, you know, within a week, maybe after the holidays, uh, we'll submit that package over to you. Um, we'll give you some, a week or two to review it and then I'll wait for you to let me know when you want to get together virtually or even in person to, uh, go over some of the details and go through the review process. Uh, we talked about the, uh, uh, meetings tonight and tomorrow night. And under miscellaneous items, um, you know, we discussed with Dennis. The upgrade of the controller at the Auburn Street facility, and again, that could be done independently, it's really not a huge deal. The controller that has the, uh, instrumentation and controls, it's pretty dated, that kind of goes back to the original, uh, pump station. It does make sense to make it part of this project because, um, the cost would be efficient versus having to bid it separately. Uh, and the controller is dated, you know, again, goes back to 30, 40 years now, uh, with a new controller, maybe the space would be smaller, the, the box would be smaller. Um, and then you could put in, um, some contingencies to, to get, you know, like new cars, new expansion in that new controller to, to get some more alarms into the, into the box. Uh, we talked about the floor meter outside the station and this would be shown on the design plan. Um, we are going to look at funding opportunities and I could think the Mass Works program, I've been working with, uh, the Townstone on a sewer expansion. Uh, in the industrial park off of Route 27. And that would qualify for the Mass Works program here, I think, uh, the, this project most likely does not qualify. But of course, there's the CARES Act, uh, we keeping an eye on any stimulus package that could result from the, um, you know, from this pandemic. Um, if the government is going to, uh, do some shovel-ready programs and we keeping a close eye on this, if something comes up, we're gonna look into all these opportunities and apply. It doesn't really hurt to apply and see what happens. This is what I pretty much have, um, and of course, I sent you, uh, copies of the cost estimate, was it last week, I think? Uh, and then one sheet had the base bid and then the other sheet had the base bid and the assessment of the, uh, existing pipeline. And I think the numbers varied from 12 to about 15 million, but there's a pretty healthy contingency in there and I think, you know, um. Uh, we just want to make sure that we don't, um. It, it is pretty healthy and I think pretty conservative.
Okay. Um, yes, you had, with, with the, the question from Dennis last week, um, you know, we had a joint meeting with the selectmen last week. And there's new rules with, um, holding town meeting, I guess it just came out with the latest COVID guidelines and. So it's gonna be probably January, hopefully, before we could even have a town meeting. Um, I think we're still gonna, we still requested, um, to have a special town meeting. To get this voted because I'd like to have it so we can be bidding this, you know, late spring instead of waiting. You know, for a May town meeting and then we're not bidding the thing until July and we, and we lost our season. So, um, we, we, we're still gonna go down that road, it's good that it doesn't affect the SRF and, um. You know, because the, the, the other option of borrowing wasn't, uh, wasn't too feasible, so.
So one thing I, uh, I don't know if I mentioned or not, but I did check and then, uh, of course, there's the principal forgiveness, whether you're a housing choice, uh, community or not. Um, uh, and usually, it's really hard to put a number to it, but usually in the, uh, in the range of 2 to 3% of the principal that's borrowed. And definitely Whitman qualifies for that through the SRF program. Um, so any, anything helps, um, it would be, uh, you know, in any event, I agree with you 100% that the job should be bid in the winter. And bidding a job in the winter would attract, I know this job's gonna attract a lot of contractors. Uh, you know, a lot of the contractors who built it back in the, in the eighties, uh, still in business and they're certainly looking, uh, it is a, um. You know, it's been done once before, you know, you've gone through this alignment, you know what to expect. Um, and it, it's pretty lengthy and it's, uh, a lot of it is not difficult, not that difficult to do. Uh, but I think, uh, this will attract a lot of people and the bids will be very competitive. Uh, I think there's a lot of benefit from bidding this in the winter versus having to bid it in the spring or in the, uh, in the summer because you're not gonna get, uh. The competitive numbers, uh, if, if somebody has replenished their backlogs and not looking for work, uh, you just kind of throw a number at it. Uh, but then again, the earliest we could do it, you know, SRF, if we go on the SRF route, which most likely will, sounds like they, they do have to, um. Review, uh, we have to do the checklist, um, and then the earliest we could perhaps do it would be, uh, uh, bid it in, in late, uh, March.
Okay, but yeah, I mean, I think that's the, the target date. They, that HCC grant, is that something you guys could help us with or is that something we should reach out to?
No, it's. Pretty simple, I'd be more than happy to do it, it's not a whole lot of effort and it's a, uh, it doesn't really have a deadline, it's a rolling submission. Um, some of the grants, like the Mass Works has a deadline and already expired, um, the, uh, submission date was in August for 2021. Uh, the HCC, you have to be, uh, you have to apply to be a, uh, an HCC community first before you apply for the grant. And I think it would be a good idea to check with a planner, um, and I'll be happy to have that conversation. Uh, because they have a lot of that information, like the zoning, the, uh, uh, the housing, the, you know, uh. Lot of that that would go into the, uh, he, he has all that information, but in terms of putting the application together, it's not a whole lot of, not a huge effort. And the grant itself is not a huge effort either. Uh, the EDA CARES, um, it is also a rolling submission, um, and this is definitely worth. Uh, applying for and we certainly would help you with that.
So Dennis or Bruce, um, as far as applying to be an HCC community, is that something you can follow up with? Sounds like that needs to happen before. We can apply for the grant, that they do apply to be that community, I mean, if we can get another 250 grand out of it and then maybe lower our, lower our interest rate. Sounds like we should. I asked one of you guys, Dennis, to, to follow up with Ziad and Town Hall. Yes, no?
Yeah, I just had on move myself.
Okay.
We can take care of it. You look into it.
What I could also do, Kevin, for the next, uh, meeting, I could perhaps, um, uh, put in the, uh, the Excel table that we generated for one of the other jobs, the SRF thing. And just show the difference between one and a half percent and 2% for the life of the loan and see how much of an impact on the, uh, on the, uh. Cost of the loan would be over, over time.
Okay. Um. You guys have any questions or?
So I'm getting head shakes negative.
Okay. It's, it's moving, I think we're gonna hold that March date, that, that's the key.
The only thing that I could see, um, delay in this would be the MEPA, if there is an EIR, Environmental Impact Report, uh, and of course, MEPA had 60 days for review. And the review, the clock had started, but if it is a, um, environmental notification form, that would be 30 days from. The submission of environmental notification form, but I think, you know, I am, uh, confident that we, we're on target to, if everything goes well. We could technically finish the design by December 31st.
Okay, that's great. Alright, I think. You guys are all set, I'm all set.
Thank you, Ziad.
Thank you very much, on to my next one. Take care.
Thank you.
Alright, so we got, uh, some trash abatements that we, I think we talked about last time.
Yep.
All the senior discounts.
Are you, uh, is that?
Is that on?
Yeah, you can talk.
Yeah, we got, uh. We got, uh, senior discounts, I'm not gonna read them all, I'm just gonna, there's, uh. 228 senior discounts and for a total of $5,725. Uh, so we're gonna need a motion, uh, for that amount to abate, uh, all the seniors in town for their discount. I'll make a motion that we give the seniors the discount, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that's the four of us that gave eyes, Kevin. They, they, they are, uh, the 285 dollar ones, those are, uh, couple bills, right?
They're like people that came off the trash or, um, they've got bills because they, they were one family or two family and they should have been different than that, so yeah.
Um, I have a list of, uh, looks like 20, uh, trash abatements, uh, people that have discontinued service or, uh, moved or. Any number of the, the above, so, uh, the total amount is $5,415, um, for the 20 abatements for trash.
Question on that abatement, didn't we discuss back some time ago, the effect of as of. Beginning of this fiscal year, July 1st, that we would not consider partial abatements of any kind for people moving?
So we do, we'll do abatements in six-month increments, we don't do any less than that. So if you start the year, if you come off a town trash before December 31st, we'll abate the second, sixth month of the year. But if you, if you have trashed after December 31st, you, you're, you're committed to the full season.
Wow, all of these are $285 bills, so these are the new bills that just came out.
Oh, okay. So a lot of these abatements that you're voting on here are bills that went out to residents that some of them, in some cases, they are no longer the owner of the property. So there's some invoices on there and some, um, and some abatements, um, so that's what you're looking at there. And, and on that note, we are gonna work with the software, the billing software company. Because I think we discussed this at the last meeting, that in the future, if you are a, if you currently get the senior discount for trash. We're gonna have the billing software, hopefully carry it over to each subsequent year so we don't have to do this. And, uh, we'll just have to keep an eye on any changeover in ownership of properties. Uh, you know, if the property sold, we'll have to make sure that they don't continue to get that abatement for that property. But other than keeping an eye on that, um, we're gonna make sure that we don't have to re-abate and go through this every year. I believe the board's wish last week, we talked about it.
Bruce, we had said, making that a vote, we, we talked a little bit. Does the selectmen, or was it, do we want to make it a vote, I mean, to make it binding or, I, I don't know what. The thoughts were, I mean, I, I guess the whole not carrying over year to year. The, the list, that was just a. A, a comment, it wasn't really a procedural thing or, do we know?
So I think that if the board wishes to vote on it and so therefore it just carries a little more weight, as far as I'm concerned, I can go. To, uh, the IT director and I've already had discussion with the town treasurer, she's on board with that, she thinks it's a good idea rather than have. We, people have to come down, fill out a form every year and then us have to issue the abatements after the fact. That we go ahead and have the billing software before the senior discount each year. And she, the treasurer was just, she reiterated that we want to keep an eye on any, um, you know, sold properties, properties that have turned over to somebody obviously not a senior.
I think we, we should enter it into a vote, you know, make it official, if someone want to make. A motion, that way if there's any pushback from someone else, you know, Bruce can have the board's support.
I'll make a motion that we enter into the. On law. On law. Verbal verbiage, whichever the case is, that we have senior discount carry over each year.
Seconded.
Alright, motion seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Get all four here.
Yep.
Kevin, we still have a, is everyone all set with this now? So we need a motion for these twenty abatements for the amount of five thousand four hundred fifteen dollars.
Sorry.
Make a motion that we abate those. Twenty one residents their money due.
Seconded.
Alright, motion seconded, all in favor?
Alright, we got we got two double bills. Six rosina wage. Five hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents water, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents sewer. They were double billed. And then we have another one. Forty-eight Linden Street double billed water, three hundred and fifty-two eighty-six, sewer two nineteen oh one.
I second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That's it?
Hog Memorial, one more thing.
Hog Memorial, Katie?
Yes, so we're getting late in the season here, but we still plan on. Over lane, Homer Drive in the middle there, but the the Hog Memorial. Where we had previously run the water main and the binder sits now. Based on the amount we have left in the water article that that was gonna pay for this asphalt. We 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 would be short. And, you know, Dennis brought up a good point that. There's money left in the article for the water main project on Raina Rav. That if we waited to, especially if we're gonna have a town meeting coming up. We could vote to transfer that leftover water main project money from Raina Rav over to the Hog. Project to complete it. It's it's twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars short. We have sixty-eight thousand left from the initial project. That way, I wouldn't have to use the the money that gets voted by town meeting to supplement that. Or chapter ninety money. And, you know, I thought it was a good idea, you know, that road's fine the way it is. You know, if we have to do, put the top on in the spring. And not have to dip into, you know, the other monies. It's sounded like a good idea, so I think, you know. I actually told T L Edwards that was on hold and. Pending that changeover from the other town, the other article. And we're still gonna do the middle row, we're still working on that. They promised me they're gonna get it done. They were gonna be here last Friday, but we got rained up. We actually. Were sweeping the road at five in the morning, getting ready for them to come here and then the rain just kept coming, so we canceled it for the day.
Okay. Just a question, where that money was in last year's, doesn't that just revert back to the enterprise account? Like the Raina Rav?
So the Raina Rav job, he encumbered that article money, so it didn't revert back to to an enterprise account yet. And and so now that, because that hasn't, we can we can word an article. You know, to transfer, you know, water main project from Raina Rav. To what to finish off the water project on Hog Memorial, you know, we'll word it correctly.
Alright, and again, that has to be done. We have to move it from one to the other, I guess.
Correct.
We move it by town meeting.
Right, we we posted with the town.
Makes sense to me. We got money left over, let's use it for. What we intended it for.
Okay, I don't think we need a vote on that. I just, that was kind of more of an update and. You know, we'll we'll make sure the article gets into the very next town meeting, whatever that may be.
You don't need an official motion on that to move that one over?
To. We can't, we, town meeting has to do it. So we're just gonna propose an article. You know, more rightly, our board will sponsor it.
That's a new concept that we sponsor an article that's actually known that we all know.
Look at the town meeting board go.
I think we'll leave twenty-five to thirty of it.
Are you updating on new employees?
Yeah, we're we're moving forward pretty good. All all new candidates have taken their pre-employment physical and drug test. The physi- physicals are all good. We're just, the drug tests take a little longer to come in. We have two that will be ready to go without the two week notice, although it might end up being that anyway. We just, you know, so after we do the physicals and we get the drug test results back, we do the last thing is a query. And once we, once we get the queries back and those are okay, we we just set a stat date.
Yep, good. Glad to hear it. We'll be back to a full force, that'll be nice.
Right, and we'll be having. Well, I'll I'll update you on our other assistant mechanic, probably on our next meeting. Might have to have them in.
Okay. I I don't know if we officially set. The meeting, but we'll be December eighth will be the next meeting, right?
Yeah. If if we're gonna meet with Ziad. Let's do it in person. I don't wanna go through this again. This is insane. We don't need to do this again.
No, I apologize guys, I I messed up too. I'm the one that said I wanted to meet just as much as Wayne wanted to meet in person and I. I didn't read my own emails, so.
Well, it would have been fine, but it's just. It's nice to meet in person.
No, I I especially with drawings and stuff and plans. Good.
Pump stations, they're gonna end the two G support from Xylem is gonna end here by January. Based on our previous history with Xylem. Since then, we've discovered another company that does the same thing. We actually have two pump stations on it already. Xylem will do it for twenty-eight thousand, redo the system. Hayes pumps will do it for twenty-six thousand. Based on the support we got on Xylem, I've been recommending we go with Mission.
How many stations we look at it?
Yeah, fifteen.
Oh, really? They're all on two G? None of them upgraded to three at least?
No, no, I'm sorry, there aren't two of them. There's so there's prices for fifteen stations. And we, and you know, like, Belgium never got, Belgium still.
Maybe we need to leave them all that quick.
Yeah. Except to you guys, I mean, I just think we, you know, I mean, the Xylem, remember they tried to pull the thing with the the subscription fee? According to their, they're, I've asked them three times for, you know, I mean, once, you know, when's my next invoice coming? It still has not come. It expired in July.
I mean, I make a motion that we go to Mission and and get rid of. Put all the pump stations together.
Yeah. So have motions, someone will second that?
I'll second that. Second if I did cook.
All in favor?
Bye.
Sold. Anything else?
Next time, we'll talk about estimates.
How estimate water bills and all that?
Fairly linked, so. When I get it done, are you guys gonna make it over? I'll I'll name it together. But if you guys want to look it over and and have your comments.
For feet up?
No.
In reference to the fifth run of the high school?
No, it's estimated those.
I thought we had something on about. The other water main break spree. A hole's punched on how or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
They just, you know, the the main, you know, it was, it was a section of main that had been. Changed when they, you know, way back when, when they called it. So it was a little bit over compared to what it was and they were getting a little post event that should have been. They've got all the way. And and wasn't there when they they started the drill. The other thing is they they also hit a rock and and the the drill rocked. You know, down the down the rock.
Don't you typically stay away from the water main though?
If you know, yeah, if you, you know, you got good, you know. I thought the the cast iron was a lot further up the road than where it is. That's something that we're gonna have to address sometime.
See, you could have been involved in all this, Kevin.
Yeah, appreciate that. We got anything else on the agenda? We're still recording. Alright, someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Seven, you made a motion at seven thirty-eight to adjourn, I second.
Alright, motion and seconded. Hi. Gentlemen, thank you. Apologize again.
Alright, we'll talk to you.
Alright, see ya.